January thirteenth meeting of the Select Board of the Town of Concord. Our first order of business tonight is to go into executive session for the discussion of strategy regarding the Estherbrook Road litigation and a letter from certain Estherbrook Road landowners asserting additional claims against the town. I would entertain a motion.
I moved open to executive session for the discussion of strategy regarding Estherbrook Road litigation and letter from certain Estherbrook Road landowners asserting additional claims against the town and to return to open session.
Second, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Lawson?
Aye.
Ms. Hodgkins?
Aye.
Ms. Attenman?
Aye.
Ms. Escobedo, myself?
Aye.
The motion passes and we will adjourn to executive session.
My thing should be clarified for executive session. Did you confirm that having doing the meeting in an open session would be detrimental to the town's litigating strategy?
I did not, but I should have so stated.
You should confirm that if that's in fact the case.
It is in fact the case, thank you. And that should be in the...
It should be in the...
Statement.
Statement, yes.
Right. Thank you very much and we are adjourned. Good evening and welcome to the January thirteenth meeting of the Select Board of the Town of Concord. First item on our agenda this evening is a consent agenda on which our town accountants warrants, minutes to approve December eighteenth, December second, and December thirtieth, gift acceptance from the White Pond Association of sixteen hundred ninety-two dollars and three cents, the White Pond Management Planned Gift Account, a number of one-day special licenses. The following are offered at the Umbrella Community Arts at Forty Stowe Street, twenty-first of January and the twenty-third from six-thirty to ten-thirty P.M., the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth of January from seven to eleven P.M., the twenty-sixth of January from two to six P.M., the thirtieth of January from six-thirty to eleven-thirty P.M., the thirty-first of January from eleven to seven P.M., the first of February from eleven to seven P.M., the sixth of February from six-thirty to ten-thirty P.M., the seventh and eighth of February from seven to eleven P.M., the thirteenth of February from six-thirty to ten-thirty P.M., the fourteenth, fifteenth of February from eleven to seven P.M.
Seven to eleven.
Seven to eleven P.M., the sixteenth of February from two to six P.M., and the eleventh of February from six-thirty to ten-thirty P.M. And these are all wine and malt only.
And I think you also intended to say on eleven, one-thirty-one from seven to eleven, on two, one from seven to eleven, and one-thirty, six-thirty to ten-thirty.
That's what I meant to say. Saltbox Farm at Forty Westford Road on the sixth of February from seven to ten P.M. and from the twelfth of February to six and ten P.M.
Wine and malt only.
Wine and malt only, yes.
Quick question?
Yes, ma'am.
On the gift acceptance.
Yes.
I'm wondering, are we expecting more, are there periodic gifts that may or may not come in from White Pond Association, or is this like the last part of something? Or just wondering what this was.
So they, in addition to the gifts of the land, they had a reserve capital fund in it.
Right, right.
That's this part, but I do know that they want to, they know a smaller amount of money for this account for a term, I don't know, like a couple of years maybe to see if there's any close out issues that they have.
Sure, okay.
Which lies on their part and may be beneficial to the town. So if that term expires, then they'll turn the rest of it over.
All right, so there might be one more at some point.
That's all.
Okay, right, thank you.
And then I have two quick amendments to the minutes. On December thirtieth, minutes, on the fourth, under the pollinator ban, neo-nicotinoid thing, Ms. Hodgkins's name is spelled incorrectly, correct that, and on the December second, minutes, on the one, two, three, fourth page, Ms. Rasmussen's name is spelled incorrectly, so if you could just correct those. And so I would entertain a motion to approve the consent warrant as amended.
So moved?
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is a town manager's report. Mr. Town Manager.
As I start to begin, the census 2020, the every ten years federal census is upon us now. The Town Clerk, Kelly Dari, is really running point for the town on this and is so far doing an excellent job. I know she wants to discuss putting together a committee of volunteers to help really make sure that we ensure an accurate count. To that end, there is an event for a community, a workshop event for community leaders and advocates. It's Sunday, January twenty-sixth, at the Harvey Wheeler Center, two to four P.M., so Sunday afternoon, and I don't know, I didn't get the information about the census and the work that she's putting together on that so far. In addition to that, the municipal life plan will be working on its annual operating budget. I know that they'll be presented to the board this, at their meeting on Wednesday. So I have seen, there is a draft budget that weeks will be distributed and they'll start that work. And then on Friday, Friday and Saturday, the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, is the annual Massachusetts Municipal Association Conference, the May Conference. A number of town staff do attend that conference, so Friday, I miss, there may be people who aren't normally here, who won't, who will be in Boston at the conference, including me.
For the record, just for the record, I'm not able to attend and I've delegated authority to vote on behalf of the town, the town manager.
Yeah, the business meeting is on Saturday and there are several items of business that need to be voted on, so I will represent the town in that. And I'll also be representing the town at the awards banquet where the town, as I think we mentioned in previous, will be receiving their award for the use of social media. Any other questions?
Questions for Town Manager? All right, thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is Chair's remarks. I have a couple that I want to make. I reminded everybody that the Town Caucus is the twenty-seventh of February here in the...
January.
January, yes, thank you. Here in the hearing room at seven-thirty P.M. And second, on that same evening, at six o'clock, the Select Board will be meeting. Here in the Select Board room, we have two significant items on our agenda that evening. We will set the warrant and the order of articles on the warrant, and we will join by that by the town moderator, who I've spoken with and she's able to attend. And the second item on the agenda that evening will be to be approving the town manager's budget, as the twenty-second, right?
Budget, what, sorry. Budget, yes.
Budget, yes. All right, so that's all I have, any questions on that?
Nope.
The next item on the agenda is a Concord semi-quincentennial, which is the two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth anniversary of the battles of Lexington and Concord, part of a bigger celebration for 2026 and the Declaration of Independence. I have been meeting, as I've told you before, with a number of folks in an informal way to try to get a handle on this. I finally did meet with representatives from our sister cities of Lexington and Lincoln, as well as with the superintendent of the National Park to begin this process. And I'll be meeting this Friday, I believe it is, with Mr. Putnam from the museum, Melissa Sawfield, Carol Wilson, and B.J. Dunn, the superintendent of the National Park, to just be continuing our brainstorming. Two things, I will be coming back to you on the twenty-seventh with a draft to create a Concord 2025 committee.
I think you said two-hundred-and-twenty...
Two-hundred-and-fiftieth.
Two-hundred-and-fiftieth, that's...
I was just having the same, yeah.
Yeah.
Good.
This is...
It's not the two-hundred-and-twenty-fifth, it's the two-hundred-and-fifty.
It's not, it's the two-hundred-and-fifty, that's why it's the semi-quincentennial.
That's...
So I'll be coming back to you on the twenty-seventh with a draft of a committee charge.
Okay.
I must tell you that when we celebrated the two-hundredth, there was a significant committee structure in town. There must have been fifteen different committees. And so I think what we want to do is get the executive committee going and then let them begin to plan this activity. The one item that I need your input for, for discussion that I'm having again on the thirty-first with the, my fellow selectmen from the other towns and superintendent, is the nineteenth of April in 2025 falls on a Saturday, and Sunday is Easter. And Monday is the traditional day we celebrate Patriots' Day. So one of the things that will come back to you as selectmen, but that we'll be discussing at this time on, a meeting on the thirty-first, is try to decide when we are going to do certain things. So for example, set aside the nineteenth for our dawn salute, which is always under nineteen, and then any reenactor events, and set aside Monday, the twenty-first, for the parades and any other collateral activity. But everybody has suggested that it would be very important to try to get those things resolved now to give people a lot of head time.
Is there an order already to the events for the two-hundred-and-fiftieth?
What do you mean, an order?
Well, if we're setting aside certain parameter dates, are there other pieces of event that have been determined so far that will fit?
No, there's been nothing, there's been nothing, it's just a matter of being able to set those to...
Okay, to lock.
Things so that people, when they start planning...
Yeah, okay.
I think the suggestion that's been coming from this group I've been meeting with is while there'll be events on the nineteenth and twenty-first, the thinking has been there will be a series of events leading up to that.
Okay.
Whether it's a play, or whether it's some kind of reading, or whether it's whatever happens to be commemorating other events, perhaps like the Boston massacre, or Paul Revere capture, or other things.
Right.
So I'll come back to you with a draft charge on the twenty-seventh. We won't try to adopt it then, but at least get the ball rolling and see if we can get this undertaken. Okay? Yes, sir?
Today, actually, we, Representatives from the Town of Lexington, the superintendent of the National Park, and Representatives from the Town of Concord met to begin talking about the overall content of the Liberty Ride, the trolley service, and looking at ways of maybe enhancing that service by looking ahead at the two-hundred-and-fiftieth to kind of build towards that. And so the dialogue, for logistical purposes, between two towns is gone underway, so it's one of the reports, or one of the administrative ones, too.
Well, there's a lot, there's a transportation issue, there are security issues, there's all those. All right, thank you very much. So the next item on the agenda is town meeting and warrant update. So...
Warrant's closed.
I will tell you that the warrant closed last Friday, and I think we have fifty-one articles that have been certified by the Town Clerk. Most of the ones are the ones that we have already looked at. There were, however, a number of citizen petitions that came in, and that's in addition to the ones that were brought to us that we agreed that we would sponsor. There was a petition about historic district nomination, that is how people become members of the Historic District Commission. There is a warrant article about healthy school buses, an article about municipal electric fleet electrification report, there's an article proposing posting of open meeting law complaints, there's an article of onsite posting of PRD applications, physically at the site for a PRD that was the notification.
Posting of, I'm sorry?
Notice. So physically at the site of a PRD, there would be some noted. Investigation and amendment to the Town Council bylaw, an amendment of the sign bylaw, again applicable to PRDs, and a one-year moratorium on zoning bylaws for section ten, which is again a PRD one. So there are one, two, three, five, six, seven, eight certified petition articles.
And there are how many about PRDs? There are three?
There are three that are about PRDs.
And how many do we have altogether?
Fifty, I think it's fifty-one.
Fifty-one, is what you said.
Just, I can double check.
That's close enough.
It's fifty-one or fifty-two.
I thought I heard you say fifteen, and I was like, whoa, okay, fifty-one.
Total articles?
Yeah. I have, I have it right here, I just forgot whether it was fifty-one or fifty-two, so if you'll bear with me for one second.
I have fifty-two.
You have fifty-two? I have fifty-two as well.
So just for, because again, we went through that quickly, the municipal electrification, is that different from the known as gas?
It's municipal, yes, it's municipal fleet.
Fleet, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that word.
Electrification, because I didn't say it.
And the last one you mentioned?
Is a one-year moratorium on zoning bylaws of section ten, which is the PRD bylaw.
Okay.
So our job on the twenty-seventh is we have to decide which of the submitted and certified articles will in fact appear on the warrant. We have discretion with all of those articles except those that are zoning and planning bylaws. So we will have to decide about whether or not to place these articles on, these petition articles and all of the other articles. We will also that night try to set the order, and that's where the moderator will join us for that, because it's always a fairly tricky thing to try to group particular articles. So I want to thank the town manager, and in particular Kate Hodges and Chris Cammety, and the Town Clerk, who've been doing a lot of work to get the warrant organized, after the closing, Jeremy as well, I don't exactly know everybody's...
I mean, just if I can build on that comment, Chris and Jeremy and I are all relatively new, and so Kate really deserves a lot of credit for really carrying us throughout this process, and to an extent, my best to her.
Yeah, she's been very, very helpful, so great, so thank you. So we'll again pick up the warrant article, the warrant articles on the twenty-seventh.
Okay.
Right, next article on our agenda this evening is portable housing trust study committee update. Keith? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Keith Burgman, three-sixty-eight, Chair of the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee. And reporting, we're reporting in, just first I want to thank the Select Board again for your review and approval of our committee's recommendation back on December sixteenth, and including a proposed portable housing trust bylaw on the 2020 annual town meeting warrant. While the warrant is still in your hands, and indeed before the warrant closed, we wanted to get back to you with, with some further information based on Town Council's review of our draft bylaw. Thanks to Kate for, and the office for arranging for that review. The Affordable Housing Study Committee was able to meet and discuss that last Tuesday night. We went through all of Council's recommendations and suggestions, and were able to submit in time for your packet, a redline version and a clean copy of the bylaw as it had been originally presented to you, with, with some edits that the committee has voted to recommend further to you based on input from, from Town Council. Now, in the, in the process of doing my talking points for tonight, and I'll keep it brief, that I saw that, and I'm in fact sharing, I prepared a memo today, which, which might have been helpful for you as you reviewed your packets beforehand, but to hit the high points, I wanted to say that there are no significant differences in, between the two versions, that the main pieces of the, that we presented in the PowerPoints remain intact, we're able, we're happily accepted Town Council's amendments to the text so that it flowed more properly, and, and those are shown in the redline version. There were also a series of specific suggestions that Council made, I think there were, there were six in all, or six or seven, and we went through each of them, and were, and our revised bylaw does propose to add, to, to accept certain of Council's suggestions, but not to accept others. And I thought it'd be worth just quickly going through those. That the bylaw that you have in, in section six, which enumerates the powers of the trustees, adds three paragraphs, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, which are as recommended by Council. They specifically reference the ability of the trust to compensate town employees for, for services that the town may provide to the trust, to, for the trust to establish criteria for qualifications of recipients and expenditures, that's in paragraph twenty-one, and then to serve as a lottery and monitoring agent for affordable housing in paragraph twenty-two. We thought those were fairly non-controversial and things we'd want to do anyway. The remainder of the recommendations we did, did not adopt, and I want to just quickly go, go through those, in, in large measure it was because we were, we were comfortable with some of the solutions that we come up with, and, and if it was not a legal matter that, that we thought we would just bring into your attention. In, in one of them, in proposed section four, the, the advice, or the suggestion, rather, of Councils, that we might want to change the number of consecutive meetings that a trustee could miss before being ineligible to continue to serve. It's really inside baseball here, I think, at some point, but we thought five regular, five consecutive regular meetings, if you're absent from those, that that ought to be enough. Council's concern was if you only meet quarterly, that's a year and a, that's, you know, a year and three months, and we thought that this committee will very likely, if they're doing their job right, will be meeting monthly, so that we need not be concerned about that. We, we did not include in our recommendation adding a provision to section four that, that would have prevented the Select Board member or the town manager, if that position is on the, the, one of the trustees, from serving as chair. Not to tie the hands of, of the future, there may come, come a set of circumstances where it's advisable for the, if you've, if you've only got five members, it's between five and seven members, if you opt for five, and there are three citizens and two, two officials, and you're down some number of citizens for reasons that we can't forecast, maybe it would, you'd want to have the flexibility to have, to have the Select Board member or the town manager serve as chair, and did not want to, did not want to limit the ability of the committee. We're not advising, we're not making a recommendation that that's who the chair ought to be, but that if, if, just to preserve the option for the future Board of Trustees. Council, it asked whether we would want to continue to require a, a prior vote of approval of the Select Board to accept property, and we would, and so we would not want to reconsider that, nor would we want to limit the Select Board's approval of property acquisitions to some dollar amount, so, and he suggested seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars as the, if it's less than that, it wouldn't need your approval. We thought it, any, any property should require your approval. There was a further suggestion to reduce from two-thirds to a simple majority, the required vote of town meeting to approve a mortgage or pledge of the trust assets, where we are, we would favor the higher quantum of a two-thirds vote rather than a simple majority, so we chose to stand pat on our recommendation. Lastly, mindful that the bylaw as is written is very broad, and the authority that's granted to the trustees, that they can exercise any additional powers that are consistent with the state statute, that we, on that basis, we chose not to accept Council's further suggestions, that we specifically add paragraphs that, that authorize the trust to spend a hundred percent of its funds, we think they have that, even if you don't say it, and secondly, to provide grants or loans. They have the authority to do it, and we didn't feel strongly that it needed to be enumerated. In fact, we thought enumerating too much might, might sort of take our town meetings eye off the ball, and that it's, it's not about the micromanaging, it's about the big picture. And lastly, I want to thank Town Council for, for confirming for us, because this has been a question that came up from the moderator, I think at our, at the chair at breakfast, of whether the charter prohibited members of the Select Board from in fact serving on other town boards. And since the Select Board, if, the Select Board member, which we very much like to have on the, on the affordable housing trustees, and which the statute says you should have a Select Board member on, on the trustees, the charter language that prohibits a Select Board member from serving on another town board or committee, Council opines, is only in the case where that person serves on that other committee in an individual capacity. The, the Select Board member would be serving on the trustees as a Select Board member, that's what they're there for, and that...
So it's a Select Board member's term?
Yes, if the Select Board member were, yeah, sort of like with, you know, like a planning board member, you know, doesn't get re-elected, and they're off the, or whatever, and they're off the Community Preservation Committee, so. So that, in a nutshell, is the, is the update. There were truly no significant changes from the meat of what we had presented before, and we're happy to have Town Council be able to go through and, and fine tune the language that we were using.
A couple of remarks before I adjourn the question. So all of the, so the version that was submitted for the warrant incorporated these changes?
The, the version that's in the pa, in your packet for this meeting, which we submitted in, by last Friday, and it's in redline form and in...
No, I know in the packet, but this was also the one that was submitted for the warrant.
Well, the...
Not originally, I don't think.
No, the one that we submitted on December sixteenth did not contain this, these edits, because we didn't get Town Councils until January second.
But the one that you submitted Friday?
Yes, the one we just submitted Friday contains, reflects these changes for which this...
That's the one that's in the warrant.
Right, and that's, that's what, we wanted to make sure that we got that two years prior to the closing.
And I just, yeah, just for the record, all of those, all of the changes that you chose, that Council recommended, that you chose not to incorporate, were not matters of law, but matters of recommendation.
Matters of policy, yes.
No questions? Good, Terry.
Yes, so thank you for, and your committee for doing a very, very excellent job. I have one question on section six, one of, you know, item number one, like at the top of the page...
Yes.
There's several lines that are crossed out, and I didn't understand what that was all about and why they were crossed out, in item number one, top of page three, I guess it is.
Page six. Can I see the version you're...
It's the redline version.
Yeah, the redline version, section six, number one.
Oh, I see, yeah, I was looking at the first paragraph, you mean numbered paragraph number one, okay. That that language was... of the other stakeholder committees, and so we've got some work to do in the coming months.
So, probably at our next select board meeting with the chair's permission, we'll probably have the members on the agenda for renewal for their terms, because-
Because they're going to expire?
They're going to expire before town meeting.
Okay, so we'll do that. Thank you very much, Keith.
Thanks so much, thank you all.
All right, the next item on our agenda is the meeting schedule. All right?
So, you'll find in your package, I sent out a memo that included basically two options, what would be two options to meet five weekends in the next full year, and then I also put in conflict that there would be a meeting every Monday, so for the first option, there's two holidays that would reflect with that meeting schedule, and the second option, there are three. I didn't suggest alternate meeting dates for those days, but I obviously won't repeat that again. Yeah, that's all there is.
All right, so, discussion. I think I get to simply exclude myself from this discussion, I'm sorry, don't think it's-
We'll figure out something.
So, just on the alternate meeting dates, it's, you know, Labor Day, Memorial Day, Columbus Day, and Martin Luther King Day, and Presidents' Day, and obviously, different town offices are closed during those holidays, so, it would be something to get the facilities open, you know, at least-
Oh, yeah, legally.
And then maybe near folks, so I would recommend alternate dates.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, yeah. So, the question was, which, which option do we go through, and therefore, which ones do we read?
I like the first one, because it's a continuation of our existing schedule, and, you know, proposing a meeting on Tuesday, those weeks, or some, yeah, definitely not on a Monday. Just because then there's, although, then there's not a three-week gap between meetings if we switch to, am I correct?
Yes.
Yes. So, that would make the September 8th, would be the Tuesday, is that correct?
Yeah, that is the Tuesday. But, that's just my suggestion.
And then June 1st. Any other comments or questions about the schedule, are we?
No, I think that's-
All right, so, Linda, if you want to tee up a proposal to move Option One, as outlined on Jeremy's memorandum to us of January 10th?
Move to include fiscal year 2021 regular meeting schedule as amendment.
Second.
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Jeremy, for doing that, appreciate it. Next item on the agenda, transportation follow-up, Metoskis for-
Look at you, lucky me. Well, I circulated a, let me, let me back up and say, I teed this up two meetings ago with a overview of transportation, and, and this, looking at, I would start with by saying, organizing a public process on transportation in the town was the impetus, impetus behind this effort, and is one of the, you know, it was one, just as our other two initiatives have been, it's, it's one of the three big ideas in Envision Con, in Envision Concord, which is one of the things I leaned on heavily, and that's why, when I sent this around, I copied that section for everybody.
Right.
So, borrowing from our process in the previous two efforts, I drafted a, a first round of a committee charge to get this discussion underway, with absolutely no preconceived notion that this is the draft charge, or in fact, if we are set on it being a transportation advisory committee, but it's better to shoot a target than to, excuse my language, you know, we needed a target to, to start to organize around, because transportation, with no disrespect to anybody else's long, long efforts, it's, you know, it's, it's federal, it's state, it's regional, it's local, it's traffic, it's pedestrians, and it affects almost every other committee in town, as well as all, almost every one of the town managers' departments, as well as all the schools. So, to try and organize this, this isn't a hydra, this is some other beast that I can't describe. So, with that in mind, and thank you both, Linda and Sue, for getting me back individual comments, which I incorporated in the redline that circulated, or that was part of the handout, I just thought we could delve into discussion. I have taken the advice of, I think it was Linda who noted quickly, that, you know, waffling between being a action-based versus a policy-based, this is intended as policy, but in other discussions, I also want to just suggest at the outset, we think about this as, first, you know, education and coordination. There are a lot of things already going on in Concord, even just on local transportation, that most of us are unaware of. Many people are aware of one or two items, I don't think anybody has, other than perhaps the town manager, has the role of overseeing most of the initiatives on transportation. So, the first order of business, and in fact, it may be the, the majority of the business, is consolidating, coordinating, reviewing what we've got under, in the town right now, and making sense of it. And by that, I'm not suggesting we're not doing smart things, but making sense of it in a cohesive presentation. And that's why I thought of this as an advisory committee. I quoted the very, very wordy, long-range plan at the outset, both because that's the way we've done the other two charges, but also because it is a good way to see how big this, this puzzle is. And I think that, well, I guess I'll stop there and just take comments. I have had one suggestion, which I don't have any reason to oppose, and in fact, given, given the way I suggested the makeup of the committee, it, it makes quite perfect sense, and that would be to have this be a committee, a town manager committee, versus a select board committee, since so many of the functions under transportation that would be being advised already fall under the town manager's aegis. I would still want us to hear regular reports to the select board, because I think that the transparency of the process is probably one of the most important pieces. I think our perception of how transportation is being looked at, and moving into the future, is clouded because we have so little education as a, as a community as a whole, on all the pieces in play.
Well, thank you very much, first off, for getting us started on this, and this is, as you rightly point out, a complex and, yep, very important activity for the town, so, let me first just ask, anybody have comments or suggestions for Jane?
And I also just wanted, before we get any further on this, I offered several documents in this, one being our complete street survey, which I hope everybody had a chance to look at, our policy, I'm sorry, not survey, the Envision Concord, big idea, three-piece. I also offered the plans for both Sudbury and Acton.
Right.
Not because we're lifting from them, but because they are two of our neighboring towns that have actually taken a step and created transportation committees, so.
Good.
Enough for me.
And I know we, you know, heard from the bicycle community, and you've got them represented. Did you get a chance to share this with them, or?
I have not, I wanted to take comments first from the select board before we started circulating this.
So, comments?
Okay.
Sure.
So, we have, there already exists what we have, and pre-exist, predates my arrival, but there has been a traffic management group in town, which is predominantly police and CPW engineering, and in fact, we met coincidentally today to go over a few issues, not the least of which is the finalization of the cut-through study report. In looking at the charge, in, and I think I've mentioned other meetings, I had, I started my, early on in my career, I did some lobbying for federal service transportation policy, and I've been kind of engaged in transportation and traffic planning throughout the course of my career. And so, that's where, when you're discussing policy for transportation versus traffic issues, sometimes it's really hard to figure out where one ends and one begins, and, and there's another component, that's been kind of my new talking point in this, that there's also a behavioral change component that isn't really being talked about at any level, that I think is central to affecting change on the street, literally. And so, in talking, one of the reasons why I think I would, I would recommend it be a town manager committee, is because I could see this committee replacing the traffic working group, because then that, this group would then look at policy recommendations for the board or, and/or town meeting, but also take those policy recommendations and figure out how they can be informed by actual traffic issues that we're confronting day in, day out. And we, in our meeting today, we did talk about how there's clearly a gap between the work the town does, and what the community understands that we're doing, or the community's awareness of what we're doing, and that's, that's really a flaw that we need to work on organizationally, for, you know, the, the traffic working group and, and myself, to be more, I say transparent, we're not really hiding anything, but more open and evident in, in what is happening, and I, and I do think this is a real opportunity for that.
All right. Do you-
Can I just ask a question about that? You focused on the traffic piece being highlighted, but would, do you see the, the broader goals being accomplished through this mechanism?
I, I think what I see, Linda, is that the broader goals can be scaled through traffic, I mean, because what hap, and I guess, just can I, if I can analogize for a minute, if people say we want to reduce congestion, how do we reduce congestion? You can talk about better, more, or better multimodality, better opportunities for pedestrians and cyclists, but then how do you do that? Well, then it gets down to what technique are you implementing at the local traffic level to help enable pedestrians and cyclists to, to get around better, and, you know, get people out of their cars? And so, you know, it's, you can think globally or think regionally about transportation, but when you really want to improve the conditions out here, it's specific local, like administrative engineering solutions, I say solutions, options that you can review, and so it gets from up here to down here pretty quickly, and that's where I had a hard time kind of separating it out, because we, a committee can say, we have a policy of, you know, we want to reduce queuing at the Bar, at the Barnes Hill Road stop sign from 10 minutes to 6 minutes.
I won't favor that.
So, at, at 6:00 PM, so, so how do you do that? And you can say that as a policy matter, or you can say as a policy, that intersection is a problem. Okay, now what? Well, now you're back into traffic analysis and engineering solutions.
I, I think what I hear Linda saying is, and maybe I should just let you say it, I should-
Well, I, I see the relationship you're trying to draw, but as I read the charge, I think, and, and look at what's in Envision Concord, I think we're also concerned about sidewalks, complete streets, we're concerned about utilizing different transportation modes in town, utilizing existing resources in a different way, perhaps, so that it's not just the micromanaging, not, it isn't micromanaging, but it's not just zeroing in on, you know, a particular intersection. You know, it's stepping back almost and saying, okay, if we were using our existing buses in a different way, or if we added sidewalks in a certain strategic location, that will ease up some people getting in their cars. You know, so that you're almost stepping back from the specific complaints that come in for intersections or a certain street, or, so, I, I'm trying to figure out how that fits into how you're thinking about this.
Well, I think, we also think about transportation, like working with Crosstown Connect, engaging the superintendent on a conversation about the driver, I mean, bus drivers, some of them only work in the morning and the afternoon, some of them do work during the day, the buses do, you know, the school buses do sit idle during the day when, when they're not on their routes, but are they the right, you know, what's the valuable commodity there? The drivers or the buses, and in some ways, a big yellow school bus isn't really a great way, you know, to add to like the Crosstown Connect at the micro, or Liberty Ride or something like that. So, these, the same group of people have these discussions about those issues. And I guess, like I said, to, when you talk about sidewalks, you, you know, we really want to focus on sidewalks, that ends up becoming, you know, location-specific. Is there the right-of-way to add a sidewalk? You know, we want a crosswalk here, well, are there ramps and sidewalks on the side of the, I mean, the, the, the real part of this is, it's all heavily regulated, either at the federal, state, or local level, and it's really detailed, and so that's where the aspirational goals that we have for transportation always end up, in many times, conflicting with the, our abilities, or what's, what's available to us in terms of kind of tools in the toolbox, and that's, that's where I think if you have it consolidated in this group that works on these things day in, day out, but also connects us to the community through the broader Envision Concord goals, you get the benefit of both.
See, I see the benefits of being a town manager committee. Would you still see the schools and the superintendent being part of that process?
Of course, of course. I mean, schools, I, I started working here before school came back into session, and I noticed immediately the difference in, in tra, in just volume of traffic when school's in session, and I know the superintendent is focused on this issue, and like I said, the buses are, are a big part of-
Parking.
What she, what the school administration spends their time on, and parking the schools, it, there really are strong linkages at all levels of this, and that's where I think we, a systems-based approach, which is what is the, in effect, what I'd be suggesting, is really what I think is called for in this situation. I do think that policy recommendations that this group could come up with should be discussed at the board level and at town meeting level, but at least when, when those policy recommendations get made, hopefully, we know that they could actually be scaled and applied at the local level versus the other way around, when a group makes a recommendation, and then we can hand it to us, and we're like, yeah, we really can't do that, and then we're, you know, kind of getting beat up about it. That's what I'm trying to avoid, because I've been there many times.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jane, I think this is a really excellent start, and I apologize if I didn't get the emails somehow, or I didn't see it. So, a few points, like on the first page-
on these things day in, day out, but also connects us to the community through the broader InVision Concord goals, you get the benefit of both.
See, I see the benefits of being a town manager committee. Would you still see the schools and the superintendent being part of that process?
Of course, of course. I mean, schools, I, I started working here before school came back into session, and I noticed immediately the difference in, in tra, in just volume of traffic when school's in session, and I know the superintendent is focused on this issue, and like I said, the buses are, are, are a big part of what she, what, what the school administration spends their time on, and parking the schools, it's, there really are strong linkages at all levels of this, and that's where I think we, a systems-based approach, which is what is the, in effect, what I'd be suggesting, is really what I think is called for in this situation. I do think that policy recommendations that this group could come up with should be discussed at the board level and at town meeting level, but at least when, when those policy recommendations get made, hopefully, we know that they could actually be scaled and applied at the local level versus the other way around, when a group makes a recommendation and we hand it to us, and we're like, yeah, we really can't do that, and then we're, you know, kind of getting beat up about it. That's what I'm trying to avoid, because I've been there many times.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jane, I think this is a really excellent start, and I apologize if I didn't get the email somehow, or I didn't see it. So, a few points, like on the first page, the second paragraph where you have, um, some acronyms, CAAB is the Concord Action.
The Concord, the Climate Action.
Climate Action, right, so I'm just saying, we should probably spell these out.
Spell them out, yep.
Is, is the next one the Long Range Plan Group?
The Comprehensive Long Range Plan.
Are they still, after they finished InVision Concord, are they still active?
Well, I, I could say that the goals of InVision Concord.
Oh, I see the goals of, okay, great, yeah, I get it.
Yep.
Okay, and on the other page, the second page, I, I really do like the idea of it being a town manager committee, and maybe consolidating it, and maybe you'd end up with a subcommittee, Stephen, that would then get to the technical part about how to do the right-of-way and whatever it all was, but I do like the consolidation idea. I'm, a couple of specific points in the membership, where you say public works, public safety, are you thinking about the, like, police chief, the deputy director, or we don't know yet?
I, I wasn't, I wasn't predetermining. I, what I was trying to do in articulating it that way was to suggest how many points of town staff and town, 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 town department overlap?
Right, different constituencies and stakeholders.
That was discussed, needed to go through.
Right, and I like that you've put in the bicycling committee, and I was just sort of brainstorming a little bit, that maybe we'd consider somebody from the pedestrian committee, I don't know exactly what that is, if that's schoolchildren, if that's, I mean, maybe, there's three other groups that I've heard talk about transportation, the business community, the affordable housing community, and even the town social worker said that her number-one problem that people are coming in with is transportation, that, you know, if they want to get a meal, or they want to get from housing to a job, or whether it's the number-one problem, that the social worker is even working on.
Yeah, so for anybody who's in a economic or personal bind, yes.
Correct, so a lot of people are moving into town, and then they don't have a car and they can't, so those are just some other constituencies that we might consider, but thank you for doing this, it's excellent.
So, I have a, just a couple, one, I think, in six, item number six.
Yep.
I think we need the word "safety" needs to show up in there somewhere.
Yes, that's a really good point.
And I have no objection to it being a town manager committee at all, however, we need to be careful then, as we structure this committee, so that if the town manager, for example, was meeting with a public works person, is, the school superintendent, you wouldn't inadvertently be creating a quorum of a committee, even though you would be meeting managerially. So, I think we just need, when we structure it.
Oh, that's, yeah.
Get the right number of people there, so you can continue to meet with your people without violating the open meeting law.
If the, if I, if the town manager appoints the committee, and it's a, it's a town manager committee, I don't know that it's subject to the open meeting law for the purposes of quorums and things like that. I say that not because we don't want to, you know, post, say, have agendas and, and track our work through minutes, stuff like that, but I, I don't know that it would be subject to the open meeting law for quorum purposes.
But see, Sa, I mean, we have a number of, of committees in town that are town manager, and they are subject.
I'm not sure that's right.
So, there's a difference, maybe this would help, isn't there a difference between committees appointed by the town manager and what I think you're describing, which is a town manager called meeting?
Right.
Such as a senior management team?
Right.
And they're not subject to the open meeting law?
Right. But what are the employees that, that you oversee? This is a committee that would be a mix. You don't oversee the superintendent of schools, you don't, right?
No, but public safety officer, and somebody from, if Marsha Rasmussen was on it, and, you know, I think we just need to be, I don't think it's a big deal.
I mean, we certainly, if we did, if we did conduct ourselves, we either are subject to it, or we can conduct ourselves as if we are.
Yep.
And, you know, I think the other, the other kind of constituency is we, you know, there's on here that, I'm not sure how we represent all constituencies, but natural resources.
Yep.
You know, you don't want to plow over wetlands or things like that, just so you want to get some representation from natural resources or historic, you know, the historic commissions or the HDC or...
I think I put HDC on there.
Yeah, HDC is on there.
And Susan pointed out the council on aging, so I...
Yeah, I wrote council on aging down, too.
So, the Sud, I think the Sudbury model that you provided, I thought it was interesting the way that they had core members and then advisory members. So, if you're talking about natural resources, they may not, that may not be a good example, but they may...
Yeah, I get it, but they'd be an advisory component.
Right, and that may be a way to keep the committee manageable, but at the same time have...
Cover all of the interests.
Okay, so why don't we then, Jane, ask you then to come back to us? The reality is, we're not going to get to this on the 27th, we've just got too many things that are time-sensitive, so perhaps we could take this up on the 10th, which is our next meeting, and invite anybody who's listening, if they've got comments or suggestions, to just email Jane, and, and we'll get this back on our agenda for February 10.
Right, and since this wasn't circulated as part of the packet, it'll go into, I just want to make sure this is available.
And we'll get it posted online.
Right.
Okay, great, thank you very much, and thanks, Jane, for getting us started on this. The next item on our agenda is the election of officers' appointments. I refer you to memorandum from the town clerk of January 7th, where she lays out a list of appointments, and unless there are some objections, I would entertain a motion.
Move to appoint the election officers as listed on the town clerk's memo dated January 7th, 2020.
Second.
Second, in discussion, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
That passes unanimously, and I thank all those folks who volunteered to be election officers. The next item on our agenda is committee liaison reports. Susan?
I just have a couple of things. The planning board met for almost the same amount of time at the last meeting, it's two weeks ago, and they spent first half of the meeting fine-tuning and detailing the document they wanted to forward to the ZBA regarding 1440 Main Street, and then the second half of the meeting, they worked on warrant articles with a lot of attention on the PRD IVA. Personnel board met on Monday night, and they voted to accept the compensation and classification schedules, which is an annual thing that they do, and then there was a discussion about the role of the personnel board, generally since it, the organization in appointment of the personnel board preceded any professional human resource director or department. So, I'm not sure if there's a, if they submitted a warrant article for this town meeting.
They did.
They did, okay, regarding the, you know, the, whether the board should continue to exist, since a lot of it is redundant with what the human resources director already does, and the pieces that they vote on, like the compensation classification, are typically under, just under the aegis of the town manager, and they are on the consent calendar every year, so the, the fact that they, you know, go to town meeting, they, as a separate item instead of just being incorporated into, into the budget was discussed, so...
I think the warrant article is for the elimination of the personnel board is the warrant.
That's what they were talking about, I didn't know if that's exactly what it said, but, yeah. Then the only other thing was, I was, and Terry was there, and maybe others of you at the, the League Forum last, First Friday Forum, it was about town finance, and Stephen and Mary Hartman, Tom Swain, and a gentleman from Westford.
Mark Cost.
Presented about budgets, and also talked about capital planning, so it was well-attended and very informative, and that's it for me.
Thank you, Linda.
I attended a meeting of the Concord Housing Authority, I think, business as usual there, they're working on a number of continuing issues. The ZBA, following the planning board, was an extremely late evening as well, and the main discussion there was 1440, and a number of members of the public spoke. The committee has decided to do a site visit for that. They also approved, this will be of interest to all of us, I think Christopher Heitz received an extension of their comprehensive permit issued for an additional year, so those were the two main things there. We've already heard the outcome of the meeting I attended for the Affordable Housing Trust Study Committee. Let me say that, that committee has really functioned well this fall in terms of the tight schedule they had, and they had an agenda to get this ready for the town meeting, and they've accomplished that. There, there was also a member of the public who was there, who obviously has a legal background, and participated heavily in the discussion, so the committee really did thoroughly parse not only the, the red line comments, but the recommendations, and so I thought it was thoughtfully done. And then the NMI Starment Reuse Committee, among other things, is working, worked on the presentation coming, and I hope they're on our schedule for February, are they generally?
They are.
I might check right now.
There are.
You asked me to, then.
Yeah, that's all right, sorry. The other item there is that on Tuesday, this coming Tuesday at 10:00 a.m., there will be a community update meeting at 229 Main Street, in the trailer, and it's open to the community at 10:00 o'clock tomorrow.
Can you say when that is again?
Tuesday, that's tomorrow.
14th is tomorrow.
Or is it the 21st?
I think it's tomorrow, I hope I'm, I hope I'm remembering correctly.
All right, 10:00 a.m.?
Thank you.
It's very technical. Okay, I attended a, the NRC committee meeting, and, which voted to support the most current application of this 1440 Main onto the ZBA, they were, the ZBA was meeting, I believe, the next day, and there were other, that was a fairly short portion of the meeting, because their piece had been largely dealt with by the most recent plan from Sines, and the NRC has had a, a smaller role in that development. The, the larger discussions were around additions and modifications within the 100-foot buffer zone on various properties around town, I mean, there seems to be quite a, quite a lot of it, and it's definitely, it, there's a heightened sense of awareness by committee members, at least in conversation. And then, probably one of the most interesting sidelines was in the director's report, when they, she discussed the upcoming Sanai's Bacteria Conference, i.e. the blue-green algae conference that she and the assistant director are going to, and specifically note, was the discussion of White Pond and Warner's, and looking at where this is coming from. What I was really surprised to learn is, the blue-green algae that we've had blooms up in Warner's, we haven't been following Warner's as closely, but I assume that we will probably doing more of that, has not been found at Walden Pond, and yet Walden is a great pond, just like White Pond, I mean, and it was...
It's deeper.
It's deeper, but I think that we can all point to a lot of clear differences in the environment around each, each pond. And then, the final discussion was, going to transportation, a development of an off-road bicycling code of conduct, which the Trails Committee has brought up to the NRC, and that was specifically focusing on electrification, electrified vehicles or motorized vehicles, and I, for better or for worse, asked about e-bikes, because they seem to be in that unknown space, and I suspect that this will continue. They do understand that we are in the process of talking about a transportation committee in town, and that they may, they may actually wait to sort of take the cues from transportation discussions on bicycling, or at least that's another point of coordination. I also attended the MAGIC, the quarterly MAGIC meeting at Kai's Road, it was an interesting legislative update, not a lot of surprises there, focusing on the advances of the greenhouse gas and, and climate change legislation that are being pushed, put forward, and then we had the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Interestingly, not a lot of it specifically dealt with Concord, because we seem to be in a hole, but it'll be interesting, there's a upcoming transportation meeting in February of MAGIC, very specific, and I, I think that will probably far more on point to some of the things we're working on in town.
What do you mean, we're in a hole?
And I'm going to quickly go, and I knew you would ask me that question, and I'm looking into my notes, it was, we don't have, we're between...
Oh, between all the different regional planning agencies.
Exactly, exactly.
And RTAs.
And RTAs, exactly, so...
We're part of the MBTA, but an outlier.
Right, an outlier, so we don't really, we don't fit, and, and yet we're being impacted, so, and that's all for me.
Sure.
Okay, I attended the Commission on Disability meeting, there were two main things that made takeaways, there was quite a discussion, again, for the third or fourth time, about the parking at the proposed new library. So, after, and Marsha was, Marsha Rasmussen was there, Sherri Litfak was there, after long discussion, I think they came up with something that is really a good idea, that going to try and get some disability commission members to meet with the HDC, either a joint meeting, or they'll attend the HDC meeting, or get these two committees to talk to each other, I think was an excellent solution, instead of going back and forth, the way it's been going. And then, the other big thing that happened was at Orchard House, I didn't know this, but they have a school of philosophy there, and the door is, is four inches too narrow for the AAB code, and so they have to go to the AAB and get a variance, and then they can open the school of philosophy again, so it has to be closed right now, so, that's kind of interesting. I went to the library reception for Karen Ahern, who retired after 44 years, which is just amazing, as children's librarian director, very, very well-attended, the children sang a song to her, it was excellent. I think you were there, Mike?
No, I was not.
Stephen was there, it was good. I went to the Capital Task, Capital Planning Task Force, we're moving ahead, and we have a tentative date for a public hearing of March 2nd, so we're looking to firm that up. The Cultural Council has finalized their recommendations, they, we have a great lineup, out of 32 applications that came in, and a huge number of projects, probably more than three-quarters of them got some funding, so, a lot of different cultural opportunities. I did go to the League of Women Voters event, it was excellent, and also heard Senator Markey speaking in Acton about the Green New Deal, and James was there.
I was there as well.
And that's it.
All right, thank you. I attended the school committee, joint school committee meeting on the 18th, and the major item to re... to report to you was that they decided to move a capital article for the parking lot. I think they're still talking about it, but they decided to move ahead, uh, with that. I attended the Business Partnership Meeting, uh, where Dean Fanfield presented about his sustainable tax rate, and Stephen spoke about the, um, town budget. And I attended the Tax Fairness Committee meeting last Friday, where they spent most of their time talking about, uh, getting prepared for town meeting, but they did ask me to report, and I'll do it again tomorrow at the Business Part- or Wednesday at the Business Partnership that they, uh, are down a member now, so anybody interested in that, uh, please say so, and we'll see what we can do about that. Uh, I also want to report that we have the Chair's Breakfast on Wednesday, of course, but that means I can't attend the uh, municipal light plant meeting. So if anybody's interested in that, it's at seven-thirty at, at the Light Plant. They're going to be doing it Wednesday, they'll be talking about their budget.
Two days from now.
Yeah. It usually lasts from seven-thirty until about nine-fifteen, something like that, and they're, they're pretty efficient with that. All right, uh, correspondence, a couple of things, we, we got a letter about Mass Municipal Society Business Association Business Meeting, I already reported that designated Stevens. We got a holiday card from our sister city, uh, in Nai, in, in Japan. Uh, and also, uh, I was able to correspond with, uh, uh, State Representative Covia's office. And this is relevant to the warrant article discussion that we had earlier. Contrary to what I was led to believe, the legislative session did not end on December thirty-first, it ends July thirty-first. And one, and number two, none of the bills pending, uh, before the legislature from the Town of Concord, that is, our two housing bills and the seventeen-year-old vote, were passed.
No, okay.
But the consequence of that is, since legislative session does not end until the thirty-first, uh, July, or thirtieth of June, all six of those warrant articles
Are still live.
that we talked about can be taken off the ar- warrant.
Oh, because, yeah.
Because they weren't passed, number one, and the session hasn't ended, number two, so, all six of them.
So does that mean we have, like, forty-something articles?
No, no, that's, they're already off.
So, but what does that actually mean in terms of the fate of those?
It means they're all still live bills, either originating in the House, uh, with the seventeen-year-old vote. I can't remember the number of that, and the two housing bills are Senate Bills twenty-three, eighteen, and twenty-seven. Eighteen, they're still live, and they will get acted on by July thirty-first. So, if we in fact have a special town meeting in the fall,
Right.
which is likely, those
Could be, yeah, right.
we will have to deal with them one way or the other then, so, so.
Like, I did have one, one mislead, as I neglected to mention in my town manager report, if I could.
You could.
Um, one of our social workers at the C O A, Sharon, um, Clark, uh, passed away unexpectedly, uh, I think on Friday. I don't have any information about arrangements, but it was a big loss for the C O A, and I should have mentioned my town manager report, sorry.
Yeah, I suppose.
And, uh, the, the team up there is, is rallying, and they're, and they're strong, but it was a big loss for the town.
It was a big blow, and we extend our sympathies for her family.
Absolutely.
Yes?
Um, since you mentioned your conversation with Tammy Covia, I just
With her office.
Or with her office, sorry. Um, I just want to mention that tomorrow at the State House, there are a series of hearings um, for the transfer fee, um, issue, um, not just, uh, ours that's on the table, but, um, the issue broadly.
Statewide.
Statewide, because there's so many communities, um, now involved in this. I am aware, at this time, of two people from Concord who will be, uh, participating in that. Uh, one is a, uh, tenant, Lisa Holdorf, um, for Affordable Housing, and Frank Feeley will be testifying, um, in term, representing the Concord Housing Foundation.
Yep. Yes, it's a big statewide effort, it would be allowing the towns to, two percent, I think.
Yeah, there's a number of, there's a number of serious, yeah.
So that, that, that's, I'm glad that's moving ahead. Next item is committee nominations. Linda?
Um, I'd like to nominate Paul Ware of five-two-five Lexington Road to the Historic Districts Commission for a full member term to expire January one, two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, we have no committee appointments, or is there any public comments?
Yes.
Ms. Proctor? Congratulations on your successful meeting, we have two members of the board.
Oh, thank, thank, thank you, thank you very much, actually, there were three members of the board there.
Stephen was one of the panels.
And Stephen was on the panel, so, yes, it was you.
And then he came in.
Everyone was, was well re- w- w- was well-represented and really terribly helpful. Um, on Tuesday evening, this coming Tuesday, oh, Diane Proctor, fifty-seven Sudbury Road, thank you. Um, on Tuesday evening, Tammy Covia and John Hecht will be speaking at seven o'clock at the First Parish, um, to, uh, the topic is the good, the bad, and the ugly. And it's an opportunity to examine what it's been like being young representatives, uh, in, in the House right now, and what some of the problems are, what some of the challenges are, what some of the joys are. Um, but I think there will be some, um, it should be a very informative and interesting evening. And for anyone who's free, seven o'clock at First Parish
Seven o'clock, first hour.
tomorrow. And it's Tammy Covia and John Hecht, who is, I believe, a representative from Watertown. So it, it, again, it should be a very interesting evening, and would urge many people to attend.
Thank you, that's great.
Um, the only other thing I, I don't know that I, we don't, we don't do this necessarily regularly, but I did want to mention the H D C is short two members right now, and so, um, and one of them is a select board appointee. So we need to put our heads together.
Yes.
All right.
Um, and looking, I'm picking out, I'm thinking of this really intriguing event, and I noticed that these middle school building committee has, a subcommittee has an education, um, visioning session tomorrow night at seven, I think it's at Ripley, and I'm sorry, I didn't mention that at the, uh, town manager report as well.
Seeing no more business before us, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.